Start the meeting, is everybody good?
Yeah.
All right, I will call to order the regular Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, March 12th. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Great. Um. So for my update, a couple. Um, I'm hearing an echo, Jeannie. That might be. Yep, thanks. Um, so really good news yesterday. Um, the town received notification that we received the two congressional directed spending grants that we had applied for last year. Um, one was for Academy School and we were awarded three point six five million dollars. Um, and the second was for a police social worker position for a hundred and, I think it's a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So that was really exciting news. Um, that was passed as part of the Senate appropriation bill and then everything got put together, I guess, and then sent to the president's desk, so it's, um, official now. So, um, we'll start that process. Really good news, I think, for Academy. Um, you know, as we had discussed at our board meeting, uh, last month, you know, that project is dealing with similar, uh, overages that we've seen, like with the school project and pretty much all our capital projects with inflation and everything. Um, so it gives us an opportunity to kind of look at the project now, the funding and the spending on the project and decide a path forward. Um, just for the public's benefit, the project is not on hold. They have been working very hard, um, on the budget and really coming up with two options. One path is going to be, you know, do we build the building that everybody wants built? And what is that going to cost? And then we would have to go out to the public to get, um, approval to spend more on the project. Um, which, um, technically, all the grants that we've received, we've received now seven point six five million dollars in grants for that project. Um, you know, which is, I think, far exceeds what we ever dreamed we would be getting on that project. So I think usually you talk about grants, we were hoping to get maybe a couple million. Um, so that means the bonding, which the public received, uh, approved, which was fifteen point nine million. Um, right now, all of that gets offset off the bonding. So we'll have to go through a discussion process, uh, this board and the Board of Finance about if we want to move forward to spend more on the project, but meanwhile, we're actually going to be bonding less because of all the grants. Um, and then the other option is that we just stick to the fifteen point nine million dollar budget, but then what do we get for that? Because, um, there's some key decisions and design elements of the building that it's not going to be optimal or necessarily rise to the, um, expectations of the public if we were to stick within the original budget. So that'll be coming in further board meetings. So any members of the public watching know that that is going to be a further discussion here, uh, over the next, uh, month. Um, and the, in the committee is pulling all that together. What are the, the options? What did the pass forward, the, you know, the building we all want and the building we can only afford if we limit the spending on it? So, um, and then the police social worker position is the one, we had done a pilot program two years ago and it was very successful. We had a social worker kind of embedded in the police department. Um, and we went for this grant and I'm trying to, uh, Scott Cochran is going to be digging up the details on it again. I think this funds a position for one year, um, as another kind of pilot program and allows us to flush it out more. Um, but we have to go back in and we couldn't remember if it was two years or one year and, um, what the details on that are. Um, third update is, um, just, we were excited to, I was excited to welcome the governor to Madison last week. He dropped in just to have lunch and catch up on all things Madison and in the area. And he's a great listener, I will say, and, um, and, uh, I did speak about a lot of the issues going on in town and things that we care about. Um, so it was a nice opportunity to have that, uh, um, one-on-one dialogue with him and just convey, especially a lot of the issues that our citizens have been concerned about, including, you know, public safety issues, um, some of the housing, you know, uh, and zoning issues that we've been talking about, also funding of projects. Um, you know, he's been very supportive of a lot of our, uh, projects that we've been getting, uh, through state bonding commission. We've received a lot of money through that, um, with the support of our legislatures, but it was great to have that opportunity to talk to him. Um, and actually the, I guess, the fourth update, I would just say, is I did go to testify on Shoreline East, um, last week. Um, you know, that they might try to restore some of the funding in the schedule earlier. And I just kept emphasizing, the state is putting a lot of money into expanding the train station in Madison and that process is moving along pretty well, um, with the anticipation of construction in 2025, opening in 2027. Um, so obviously service restoration is going to be critical to making that project's success. Um, so that is kind of it from, uh, my end. Um, I'll turn it over to liaison reports and Suckman comments.
Excited about the grants?
Yeah, very excited.
What, what, kind of a mic drop moment? Um, yeah, I think this, uh, certainly the one for, uh, Madison Youth and Family Services in conjunction with the police department is a long time coming. I know we've been talking about this social worker position and, um, the strength of the position and the power of, of what they came up with. And this is really exciting that it came through, so, um, super pumped. And by the way, so we have our, uh, session with Madison Youth and Family on Thursday evening at the Surf Club. Um, it's sort of a skills session, uh, where we're going to be collaborating with, uh, the staff and, and learning, uh, a bunch of things about what goes on in Madison Youth and Family Services. So pretty excited about that, um, six to eight, I believe it is, um, on, uh, on Thursday.
Well, if you think Madison Youth and Family Services was pumped, the Academy Building Committee met last night and they were super pumped.
That.
Um, um, they are working assiduously to develop various options that we identified for them. Um, there, uh, we'll be holding a special meeting, uh, to complete their work. And, um, Peggy, I think within a matter of a couple of weeks, they will be ready to come back to the selectmen with the information that the selectmen collected about the various options. Uh, we might want to have that as a special meeting because it gets pretty gnarly and detailed very quickly when you start getting into, uh, the various options and what might be included in the building or what might not be included.
Al, I know Peggy mentioned it, but maybe you could be explicit as well. From what you heard last night, the project is not on hold, correct?
Project is moving full speed. This committee is, uh, uh, kept it moving, um, uh, and is prepared to, uh, uh, even accelerate their pace in order to, um, satisfy the selectmen's request. So, um, uh, uh, the project is moving along very nicely. Um, um, I, sometimes I think, um, uh, the public, uh, we need to help the public understand it, it takes a year or more, uh, sometimes significantly more just to do the planning and, uh, do the bidding and, and, uh, then it takes about a year of construction. So, uh, uh, the project is moving along, uh, very nicely at this point and will accelerate soon. As soon as, um, decisions are made about what to be included in the building.
And I will say that one of the things, um, I'm going to focus on is getting the details. You know, these grants obviously have timelines, process, we have to sign an agreement with the federal government. And it's interesting because we received two, uh, last year, uh, through the last budget, I should say. Uh, because remember, this is the 2024 budget that we're talking about, that we got this grant for. Um, uh, even though we're into that fiscal year quite, you know, significantly. Um, but one of them, you know, within weeks, we got the paperwork, we got to move forward, the federal government, they came out here. Um, and the other one has been a little bit lengthier. So hopefully the Department of Agriculture is very, and that's what we receive this through. Um, it's going to be right on ball with us. So we'll know what we're, you know, what we have to deal with in terms of the grant itself.
Well, I like Al's idea of the, um, the special meeting, um, because I do think it gets, um, interesting pretty quickly. Um, and included in that discussion, I think it would be good to be able to talk, um, with, with some detail about our budget constraints and our finance constraints. Um, because ultimately, we're going to run into the budget end of this, not so much the funding end of it. And, and I don't know if maybe it would be appropriate to have bond counsel present, um, for our meeting, just so that, um, you know, it can be explained to us exactly what our defenses are or if, if there's a, an opinion that can be prepared in advance, I suppose that would be fine, well. But, um, in the interest of making sure that the speed bumps are not in place for the project, you know, we, we can maybe move as quickly as possible on that special meeting.
Yeah, I, I would agree that, that I think that's the right path, a special meeting. Al, when do you think they'll be ready with the numbers again? Are you talking a week or, or three weeks or?
Um, I, I, I'm going to say two weeks. They, they have scheduled a, a special meeting. I, I, I'm not sure they agreed on a date, but, um, I, I think within two weeks, the selectmen, uh, should have a special meeting on this.
Okay.
Um, Peggy, is there any significance to, to the fact that this grant is coming through the Department of Agriculture?
I'm not sure. Um, I will say that one of the, uh, items, boxes that were checked when we applied for this grant, and I got to go back through, was the, uh, mental health services through Youth and Family Services. That was something that they, um, had highlighted as a supportable, um, uh, endeavor in terms of, you know, applying this grant, that the building, you know, there, there was kind of a resistance to just recreation facilities and it was more about, you know, what, the different components of the building. And I think that's what makes this, this project so attractive is it, it ticks on a lot of different things. It's not just recreation, it's also arts education, culture and mental health. So, um, so I think that's something we'll have to be very conscious of, that if we were to go down the much more limited, you know, building project that Youth and Family would still have to play an important role in that, I think, to qualify to keep the, the grant. Um, so that's what we need to find out. I have to get more information on. Any other updates or?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to all of our community members that came out to participate in the community conversation on affordable housing that we had, I guess, about a week and a half ago now. Uh, really well attended, I'd say about ninety people between in-person and online. Uh, we received some great information from the FINKs and some nice comments from our community members and we'll be having, uh, the Affordable Housing Committee will be hosting another session on, I believe, the twentieth of this month at four PM at Town Campus, where there will be an opportunity for members of the community to give, um, feedback basically, or, you know, statements on their experience with affordable housing. So just wanted to give the big shout out for the great participation from our community.
Love that we're doing another one too, Jen, I think that's great.
Yeah, the group's really invested in getting as much feedback and learning as much about the types of options that are available for our community. So the Affordable Housing Committee is really working hard.
Right, now they, they have been working hard and I think, uh, these, uh, community sessions are going to be important to making sure that everybody's heard and they understand kind of, uh, you know, what we're trying to accomplish, I guess, uh, with, with both zoning as well as with the P O C Ds and, and the Affordable Housing Committee. Any other, uh, selectmen comments or liaison reports? No? Okay, with that, then we'll move on to citizens' comments. Um, Jeannie, uh, please raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment to the board. There's also an opportunity at the end of the meeting.
You're good.
Okay. All right, with that then, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So vote, second.
Okay, any discussion, comments, questions? Nope, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Six passes. Um, uh, moving on to item seven, um, I'd like to invite, um, Andrew Wood to join us, who's the new chair of the Economic Development Commission. And, um, last, at our last meeting, we had talked a little bit about this application that we had received for the tax incentive, uh, deferral program. Um, and Andrew's here to talk really what's going on with the EDC right now. And then also he'll be joining us on this application, which they recommend that we move forward, so. Andrew.
Sorry, hi.
Hello?
Hello. Thank you. Thank you, Peggy. Uh, first of all, apologies that, um, I, uh, was in London for your last meeting and was meant to appear there, but, um, unfortunately, um, time went against me, so I'm, uh, I'm, I'm sorry I missed that and, um, uh, many apologies for the inconvenience that caused. Thanks for this. Um, we submitted, um, four key objectives that the commission discussed for, uh, this calendar year, which we sent to you. Um, I think they're pretty self-explanatory. Um, the most important one probably is, is the first one, um, which is to develop comprehensive communication. With the departure of Sherri Coate as the commissioner, um, we have no resources currently allocated specifically to our, um, to our work. Um, and therefore the need for us to, uh, cr- create clear communication with yourselves, with other departments, with, um, uh, the rest of the town, um, is a critical, uh, thing to keep moving forward. Otherwise, we're just a talking shop, uh, with no, with no outlet. Uh, we also feel that the rest of the town don't really understand what the commission is about, that it exists. And therefore, we must go to outside people and communicate with them, particularly the Chamber of Commerce. And we now have, uh, regular attendance, uh, by the, um, Chair of the, the Chamber, um, to, to, to work at our meetings, to work with us, so that we can combine. But we need to do a better job of getting out and telling the community about our activities and our ideas and getting their feedback, so that we can feed that back to you. Um, the, so that's the first and the primary goal. The second, um, is to develop and execute a plan to privatize, light up Madison, the holiday lights. Uh, every year, some October, we have a panic. Uh, it seems to work out quite well, but, um, uh, we want to try and professionalize that a little bit. And so we're working on that right at the moment. We also want to review the, um, tax deferral assessment, deferral incentive program. Um, that's part of the application that you've just received, to make sure that it is in line with the town's strategic goals, particularly now that we've got a strategic plan and we're approving our P O, our new P O C D. Uh, make sure that it's, um, working to support those, those plans. And, um, finally, a goal is, again, taking those strategic plans, identify what types of businesses want to come, we, we want in Madison and is there anything we can do to attract businesses that we want? In other words, take a proactive stance of trying to identify the businesses that we would want to attract to Madison and, um, uh, and see if there are things we can do to, uh, to get them to come. So those are the four key goals that we've set for ourselves for the coming year. And we wanted to, uh, have a discussion with you to make sure that you agreed that that represented the work that you wanted our commission to do and that we were in line with your thinking and so on and so forth.
Well, uh, I think that's great, Andrew. Um, you know, it's great to have, I think, a very targeted kind of incremental approach, you know, as you move in to this year. Um, I think the resources conversation is something that will start this year about longer term. I know we were kind of with Sherri's departure and the fact that that was funded through ARPA funds. It was not a part of the budget. Um, you know, it was kind of difficult to replace that resource, but I think we could spend time. Uh, I would add on to this maybe is just looking at what other towns have in terms of resource for this function. You know, just thinking if, if somebody on your team wanted to do some research and really look at, you know, what other communities, how they, what this, what a, a staff member's role is, how they source, you know, how they, how they source it, uh, or where it lays within the organization as a part-time, full-time. Um, that might be helpful too, because I think then we can have those conversations over the next year, like what does Madison need and here's what other towns have done. Um, so that when we start the budgeting process, uh, a year, well, next fall, um, if we want to think about adding, uh, a position back in as a budgeted item, you know, we have the basis to start with.
I would add as, uh, maybe an, um, uh, similar, but, but slightly left-handed thought to that. Um, if we think about the Chamber and the EDC in a Venn diagram, they don't overlay perfectly, but they do have a lot of overlap. And I'm wondering if there isn't a way for the town to, um, leverage the Chamber, um, support the Chamber in a more formal way, um, that it works to the benefit of, of the EDC and the town. Um, so I think, and full disclosure, I'm on the board of the Chamber as well. So, um, I'm not necessarily plugging it in that role. I'm just saying that we have two organizations that do, um, somewhat similar things, which is promote businesses in Madison. Um, and I'm wondering if there isn't a way for us on a lower budget kind of way to, to, to leverage that. So. Another way to think about the, uh, the upcoming budget discussion.
No, I think it's, I, we've had discussions like that with the Chamber, you know, do we partner? Do we, because we also now have this, um, uh, website, you know, that's a tourism website that the town has, has started. That's going to be launching soon or we're going to be promoting it. Um, and I remember talk, I've taught, had conversations with the Chamber. Does it make sense that we just have one that's shared with the Chamber, you know? Um, so I, I think those are all good thoughts about how we can partner with them more, um, to share resources. Any other thoughts or?
I, I've received an email from the person who designed the tourism website for the town. Um, and it's clear that the contract, I'm speaking with them later today. Um, it's clear that the contract that they had has expired or run its course or whatever. And they are wondering whether there is more money. I mean, I, I, as I say, I'm having a conversation later today, so I don't know exactly what they're asking or, or whatever. But, um, I'm not aware that we have any resources available to do, to further develop the website. Is that correct?
So, so what happened is we decided to hold off on the promotional piece, so that the website's done. Um, and will be kind of managed in, uh, in-house now by Rita. Um, and, um, the, and then we have a, a, a pre-funded, because we, we, it was supposed to be launched last summer, but obviously we put it on hold for the marketing of the launch and that's going to start this spring. Because we said, well, let's do it during our peak tourist season right now. If we want to, you know, kind of build our, let's start it in the spring rather than doing it in the fall. Um, and so I'll, I'll circle back with you, Andrew, on that, um, but, you know, because.
Today, so that I understand exactly what she's asking for or what she thinks she needs.
Right.
Then I can talk to you.
Okay, great. Um, but we, we can, we can definitely talk more about that, uh, because I think we have to make some decisions about, you know, at least, um, particularly with, you know, I, I have teed up our, our, uh, web person to take that over. Um, so the design is done, um, but it's, it's, you know, somebody's going to have to like update the calendar and maintain it, you know, and add fresh content and stuff every once in a while. So that's going to be done in-house for now.
Okay.
Um, so if no more questions about the goals, um, maybe we can move on to item number eight, um, which is the application. So item number eight is discuss and take action on a recommendation from the Economic Development Commission to approve an application from Saltwater Property Group LLC and Saltwater Property Group II LLC under the Town of Madison Tax Incentive Assessment Deferral Program for an assessment deferral of no more than five years.
Vote.
Second, Al seconding, okay, Al seconding. And then, I don't know.
Said so, moved, but I was on mute clearly. My mouth moved.
Okay, great. Um, so this was, um, we talked about this a little bit, Andrew, at our last meeting, because we had the information in front, in front of us. Um, and we, I think you guys had submitted, you know, why you thought this achieved, which I thought was great, you know, in terms of what it does for the town. Um, you know, I know that the, we've had a lot of conversations about, uh, the purpose of the policy and one of your objectives is to kind of take a fresh look at that this year in terms of the policy objectives. But in terms of this particular application that we have to take action on, um, any questions from the board on what the EDC was recommending?
What they're recommending, I think it's smart. I, I like the, the more communication. I love the downtown Madison conversation. I think that's fantastic that you're, you're taking that up. I think our citizens will very, very, very much appreciate that.
It, so in terms of the, this, this particular application then for the tax incentive, any? I mean, I think it was pretty clear what this, the, the, this seems to, well, we have, we don't really have a lot of criteria in our policy, right? But there are, I know that the EDC looked at our strategic, uh, plan and tried to align this a little bit with that and in the last pack. I don't know if it was in this packet or not. Because this, if we vote on this today, we would be forwarding it to the Board of Finance for their review. Any comments?
No, I think, I, I think EDC articulated well, um, how the project fits in with the spirit of the, uh, program. And, uh, I think, you know, it, it, it's worthy of moving forward.
They have a clear set of criteria to measure it against, so I think that's, that's the right answer here.
And I agree, it seems to meet our, um, limited and initial understanding of how this program was supposed to operate. And, um, uh, it seems to check all the boxes.
Mm-hmm. I'm in agreement with that, thought of, uh, you know, great, great, uh, project for the town, it seems. A lot of Madison businesses involved in the project. Sounds like some job creation, uh, could come along with this, so. Seems positive in, in my view.
Okay. Um, so is everybody prepared to vote? On this? Okay, so all in favor of, um, approving the application, uh, from the Saltwater Property Group LLC as presented on the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, trying to think, is that what we're doing? We're approving this? Yeah, approve an application, okay. All right, great, well, I think then, um, Andrew, um, we might want you to probably go to the Board of Finance meeting as well. You know, this will get, get forwarded to the Board of Finance, but there may be some questions. Um, and then it'll go to town meeting.
Right.
If the Board of Finance passes it, so. Um, and it might make sense, in the past, I think the actual applicant has shown up. Um, and I'm thinking maybe for the Board of Finance that would be good to do. Um. So I got to go back and figure out who can represent the applicant, but in case there's any specific questions on the project. I'll, I'll, I'll link up with you afterwards on that, okay?
Perfect, thank you.
All right, great, so that'll move forward. Um, and thank you, Andrew, for your time, so we'll, we'll catch up.
Um, I'm glad Andrew got the memo about the, uh, the plaid shirt that all the guys seem to be wearing today. Yeah, well done.
All right, great. Um, so, uh, next item on the agenda is an update, uh, from our registrars regarding early voting and, uh, from the town clerk. So Jim Newton, who is one of our registrars, is Ann here as well or?
Ann's at her day job.
Okay, all right. Uh, and Nancy, we're two chair town clerk is here, so, um, there was some materials I know that Jim had included. Um, but I think there, Nancy, you had wanted to just kind of brief the board on where we were with early voting, correct?
Yeah, I thought it'd be a good idea, um, kind of an educational, um, process, you know, this is the first one. Yeah, I thought it'd be a good idea, um, kind of an educational, um, process, you know, this is the first one. Um, to, uh, to bring to the public, so they get an idea of what's going to be happening. Um, just also to know that absentee balloting still is in place. Um, that, as a matter of fact, they start today, we have them available, um, and, um. You know, I know people were going to be planning to come in today, so, um, absentee balloting continues the same as usual. And now we have an added layer that you can now vote by early voting, and Jim's gonna. Update people and the dates and things like that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, early voting will begin for the first time in Connecticut on March twenty-sixth. It'll be a four-day early voting period, so that'll be Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, Thursday, the twenty-eighth. We'll skip Good Friday, that's a holiday, early voting does not occur on state, federal holidays. And the final day will be Saturday, March thirtieth. Uh, this will be the first time we go through this process, our plan's been submitted and waiting for approval with the state. But I do believe we're ready, and I'm here mainly to answer any questions that people might have about this process. A good example of the kinds of questions that might come along, as I did have a question from within the town. Just this week as to whether or not there would be a presidential preference primary, given that the candidates will have already been. Received enough nomin, uh, uh, enough, um, support for their candidacies that, um. That it'll, the, the, the outcome will become a foregone conclusion, but of course, the answer is we still will have. Our presidential preference primary, so I'm here to take any questions about early voting that might come along.
Uh, Jim, what, what's the public's expectation when they show up, uh, for early voting and where? What will they be asked to do and where do they go and?
Great, I'll appreciate that, so early voting will occur each of those four days I mentioned, beginning at ten AM. And will conclude at six PM, so it's an eight-hour, uh, period that folks can show up at Town Hall. At, uh, Conference Room A, the Fish Bowl, which is where, uh, where the process will occur. Obviously, that's conveniently located outside the ROB's office. Um, as this process goes on, we'll have to increase our staffing, but for this first event. We are going to staff it entirely within the registrar voter's office, so there's, there's four people, two registrars and two deputies. Obviously, we are the, the most well-informed folks about this process within the town. So we, we intend to staff it entirely ourselves, so, uh, so with a staff of four. We're going to be staffing with three folks, uh, for each shift, we'll break each day into two parts, so. Every fourth shift, one of the four of us will get some time off. Um, so they'll come to Town Hall, we are going to add additional accessible parking places. Right close to the entrance on the gym side of the building. We're also going to have reserved parking on that road just behind the accessible parking. So there'll be signs, we have portable signs that say election, uh, parking only, and there's about six spots that will be taken up. I, I honestly don't anticipate, uh, uh, significant volume here, but we, we really don't know what's going to happen, it's the first one. So this is hopefully an opportunity for us to test out our process, see if it has any holes in it. And, uh, and do that without a lot of stress that might come from, uh, greater volume, which what I would expect. We would experience in November.
When, will, um, will, will the folks be receiving, uh, a, a normal-looking ballot? And what do they do with that, do they, will there be a little booth to fill out your ballot, and you march it over to a machine? Uh, what, what, how, how does that work?
Thanks, Al, we, uh, are going to set up what in essence is a polling place in the Fish Bowl. So, uh, the first thing that'll happen is, uh, somebody entering will be greeted by a, uh, an election official. Who will be at a computer that is connected to the state voter registration system. And when they present themselves, they'll be asked to show ID. Uh, all the normal ID procedures for a polling place will be in place. Uh, they'll be looked up in the system and will first determine whether or not they can early vote. For example, if they're not a member of a party that is holding, uh, that is holding a primary. They won't be eligible to vote and, and that person would be turned away. Uh, or informed if they would have an opportunity to, uh, join a party in time for the election. Uh, the next, uh, the next possibility is that the person would have to, uh, take on some sort of registration activity. And, uh, and one of the three election officials will be sta- stationed in our office. So if any registration activity was necessary, they would be sent right out the door on over to our office. Their registration activity would take place and, and, and that person would be addressed. And the third possibility is that somebody is a registered member, an active voter, uh, for one of the parties that's holding a primary. In which case they'll be handed a ballot, same kind of ballot that they would receive during absentee voting or at the polls. Uh, and along with an envelope, so there'll be a couple voting booths set up. The accessible voting booth that we use, the polling locations will be set up, also required. And we also, by the way, uh, with a staff of three, will be prepared to handle curbside voting. If somebody, uh, communicates with our office that they'd like to vote but not come inside the polling location. Will, will be set up to make that happen as well. So the person, once they've received their ballot and their envelope, will be asked to vote it. Uh, fold it back up, put it into the envelope, uh, sign and, sign and seal the envelope. And then they will visit the second election official in the room, which will also be at a computer. That's connected to the state voter registration system, and their, their ballot envelope will be scanned in as having voted. It's important to note that unlike absentee, uh, balloting. Uh, where a, a ballot can be clawed back once voted. If somebody changes their mind, decides they want to show up at the poll instead of, uh, vote by absentee, that's not possible here. Once that, once that ballot has been received and dropped into the ballot box. Uh, that, that vote is, is, uh, is cast, it's the same as if somebody put it in a tabulator. However, it's going to go into a ballot box, not a tabulator, and it will be held until Election Day. And processed in the central counting operation where we also process absentee ballots.
Jim, you said that the envelope would be scanned into the computer, um. Which is not logged, so there's actually some sort of identification on the envelope that is unique that, that identifies it?
When that, when about, when, when that person showed up and, and was at the first election official station and were given that envelope. Uh, one of the responsibilities of that election official is to print a label, same kind of label we print for absentee ballots. That, that Nancy puts on a, uh, absentee ballot envelope, will have a, a label just like that with a barcode on it. So that, that envelope's going to have that person's name, address, party, district, uh, barcode, voter ID number. Uh, a bunch of information that's very helpful to us in identifying whose ballot that was. And, uh, and that's what allows us to scan that envelope into the system and mark it as having voted before it's dropped into the box.
And then when the envelope is ultimately opened and run through the tabulator, is that envelope scanned again? So it's a scan, and out.
Yeah, but it's not, good question, it's not scanned again, uh, the, where instructions from the state are that. This process should be as much like absentee balloting as possible. So anywhere specific instructions have not been provided by the state. What we are told is you mimic the absentee balloting process, so in that process. Ballots are transferred to a central counting operation, usually we run that in the ammo room, but. Uh, but at any rate, the, there, there are processors. Who, uh, will be checking the envelope against the list as having early voted. So, uh, our, our scan and mark into the system when the person votes. Will be, uh, then printed out on a, on a, on a roll, uh, just like it is with absentee ballots. So that the, uh, so that the central counting process can, yes, confirm. That in fact, that envelope they have in their hand was received into the system and has been marked off as having early voted. And then at that point, the envelopes are open, separated, so that the person's name is no longer associated with that ballot. And then run through the tabulator.
All right, and, uh, let's just pick a number, we receive a thousand early, um, votes. Um, and those are logged by virtue of the work that you do on the ins, uh, you know, intake of the forms. Do you then reconcile that thousand against what actually was run through the tabulator? In other words, we received a thousand and we've confirmed that we ran a thousand through the tabulator.
At the end of each early voting day, a, a report will be run. So all of our work there in the polling location will result in a, in a printed report. And, uh, and, and we have available, we'll also have available backup manual log. If, if necessary to compare that report to, uh, to a manual backup. Um, but that report will remain associated with that batch of ballots. And, uh, and so, and, and then there'll be a, uh, just as with absentee ballot. As, as we, um, transfer ballots around, in this case, we're going to be transferring from the polling location. To the town clerk's vault, uh, there's certification that happens. So every time, there's always a chain of custody with, uh, with signatures and certification. Of, of transfer of ballots between offices.
So to the person who might be worried that their ballot would be lost in the, um, gap, the, the assurance is. While we may not track yours right through to the tabulator, the group that your ballot is in is absolutely tracked. Through to the tabulator.
The group is counted and tracked and certified. And, uh, just wanted to point out that I gave to Genie an information sheet, which, uh, covers questions about the PPP. And about early voting, uh, for this session, uh, anybody can Google, uh, State of Connecticut, early voting. And first thing they'll be led to will be an information page at the state's website. Uh, where they can, uh, view an information sheet on the upcoming presidential preference primary.
Uh, Jim, it sounds like you've given this a lot of thought and, uh. Our, our questions probably seem, uh, uh, pretty rudimentary, um. Is the public able to witness the actual counting of the ballots?
So the counting, uh, and, you know, and the processing through the tabulator is always a, an event. That's feelable by the public, again, it's combined with the absentee ballot, uh, uh, counting process. So the public is, uh, is welcome to view that process from behind a secure barrier.
The availability of those votes, Jim, are not counted until the end of the process though, right? Or at least available at the end of the process.
Uh, I'm not sure I understood the question, Scott.
So, so when the votes go in, um, just like absentee ballots, I would, I would assume that the votes, the actual votes themselves are not counted. Until the, you know, when, uh, the actual voting occurs, is that fair?
That, that's right.
We might know the number of votes, but not the actual votes themselves.
The, you know, unlike absentee balloting, uh, the, when that ballot is, is handed over to us. And dropped into that box, as I said, it cannot be clawed back. So that ballot is going to make its way to the, uh, the central processing, uh, counting operation. Where we count absentee ballots and now early vote ballots. And we are required to track all the way through the system. Uh, be able to identify how many early voting ballots were cast. So when we report our stats at the end of Election Day. There'll be a new category, just as there are poll ballots and absentee ballots today. There will be a third category for early voting, so we'll know what portion of our cast votes came from early voting.
But I think maybe asked a slightly different way, will the votes be counted during the day while the polls are open? Or will, um, you wait until the end of the day on Election Day and run those through the machine with the absentees? Much better said.
Thank you very much, so, um, uh, the duration of the day. For the central processing operation where the votes are actually tabulated is being extended due to early voting. So that process is going to be able to start, and, uh, where previously it couldn't start until I believe noon. It's going to be able to start early in the morning, you know, al- almost coincident with when the polls open around six AM. And because early voting ballots will have all been cast already, the first thing we will do in the central counting process. Is tabulate the early voting ballots, because we'll have the complete batch available to us. Unlike absentee ballots, which we then will start to count second, but they can continue to come in during the day. So, you know, Nancy's office continues to collect up absentee ballots, deliver them to us on a regular schedule throughout the day. And then they get run through the tabulator. I hope, did that answer the question?
Um, Jim, just, uh, election day registration, how does that apply with early voting?
So election day registration is a process that's been renamed to same-day registration. And it's only applicable for the general election in November, so first want to point out any questions. I answer about that right now, uh, do not apply to the upcoming presidential preference primary. But come November, uh, what used to be called election day registration will be extended for the full fourteen days. Of early voting for the general election. So we'll be essentially running two operations side by side for the duration of early voting. Not only will be, will we be receiving early voting, but we'll also be handling same-day registration. Uh, anytime the need comes up, and which is why there's more staffing for the general election and early voting. Than there will be for this primary or a primary should it occur in August. And, and by the way, that same-day registration process that we operate in November. That early, you know, the, the, what was previously called election day registration, where you could come to Town Hall and register to vote. And cast a vote on the same day, that's normally staffed by five people. We're gonna, we're gonna try to do same-day registration and early voting with five people. For the duration of early voting, keep your fingers crossed.
Peggy, it's just occurred to me, I wonder if with first-time applications for, um. Surf club parking passes, if we shouldn't have a handout that says, hey, would you like to, here's how you register to vote if you haven't? Presumably, those of us that are renewing have already figured out the voter registration thing, but people that are applying for the first time. Might be new to town and not registered to vote, and if we can take the burden off of the days immediately before the election. I'm sure it would be appreciated.
And if I can jump, jump in here, because I do have, uh, something there that might address your question, Bruce. Um, for the first time this year, we are going to purchase a, um, well, actually, I don't have to pay for it. It's part of a, of a set of data we already purchased for our annual canvas. We are, are going to receive a list of, of addresses in the town where there are no registered voters. And we do plan to send out a mailing to those folks, uh, inviting them to register prior to November. In order to cut down on the volume of registration rushes that come, uh, you know, in front of a presidential election.
I guess that's something we can think, I, I'm just trying to think if we're, so, y- y- you know, mo- a vast majority. Well, you have to come in person, I guess, I don't know, can the town do that, can the town then? Just attach a voter registration application to a, a beach pass application?
I mean, I, it could be simply a, a pamphlet that says, if you're not registered to vote, here's how you do it. Um, and, and leave it at that, I, I can't imagine that. Would cost you a hard.
We, I mean, a- and if anything, we can look and see what materials, I think Secretary of State, uh, seemed to have volumes of information, like. Uh, you know, maybe we can get, that you just could be handed out at the surf club, you know, when people come in, because that's a busy place over the summer. So we could have some pamphlets. Does it say a QR code on the pamphlet that could take them right to the Secretary of the State's website for that? Application, the online application.
And I can provide that QR code.
Yeah, well, we'll see, because I, I, I know that she had, like, you know, Secretary of State seemed to have all these promotional materials. About registering to vote, so maybe we could get a case of stuff that's already been done, you know, we could just have those available. Uh, that's a good idea, and then, you know. Uh, that's a good idea. And then, you know, I know stuff is always available in the town clerk's office, but you know, surf club is obviously a high volume place. You know, starting in May. So, um, just so it's there and readily available.
Anything that cuts down on the rush to register for the presidential and, and move that workload earlier would be desirable.
And then Jim, I was just taking a look at the flyer. So the voter registration for same day voting seems to be slightly different, right? It, the pamphlet says if you want to do, or, or I should say, early voting, the registration needs to be done the day prior.
This is, this is a really complicated topic. Um, I'm hap- happy to answer questions, but we could get bogged down here.
Okay. But is that, but that is accurate. Just so that people know if they want to early vote, they can't register on the day they want to early vote. Is that accurate or no?
That is an accurate statement.
Okay.
If they're not currently registered.
Okay, perfect. Just so people, if that's the case, they can plan and make sure they get that registration done in advance of when they actually want to vote.
If they want to early vote.
Early vote, yes, thank you.
That doesn't make sense, but I won't go there.
I can make your eyes blaze over really fast.
Well, but the, people can register online though, right? So they could on Monday register online and then early vote on Wednesday.
Or the cutoff for online registration for the PPP will happen on March fifteenth.
Oh, well, for the, yeah, okay. Well, all right, we're getting into the weeds a little bit, but we'll need to have those dates solidified about when people can register online when they,
That information, that information's already up on our website.
Yeah, okay. Um, and we're going to be putting out through the community update this week, details about early voting. Um, so I know you're submitting something to Jeannie, right? To kind of lay all this out. And then the website, hopefully we'll get something prominent on the website. People have questions. This is kind of the test run, right? A low volume test run for the process.
It's not going to be a stress test, but it will be a test run.
Yeah, okay, good. And I will early vote, just to see how it goes. Um, I encourage everybody to try it out too, if you're. Yeah. Um, you know, just to see that, what the process is like. So, um, I, I, I will say, I, I, I'm guessing at the presidential, the other issues, people are going to be concerned since it's the first year. So they're probably still not, you know, one, going to do early voting necessarily. You know, they may still want to go on election day because they feel like it's new and, but the reality is you'll have had an opportunity to test the process during the presidential primary. So it'll be, you know, some of the kinks will get worked out or whatever. Um, uh, not that there's going to be any problem with it, but just the process. Um, you know, hopefully for the presidential will be, uh, smooth. So, uh, but we'll, we'll be talking more about that as we lead up to that election as well. Well, thank you for your time. Um, and I know this is a lot to absorb, but, um, you know, it's a, it'll be, uh, exciting to see this happen in the state finally. So. Any other questions? No?
Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay. So moving on to item number 10 is to discuss the status of ARPA funds and related projects. Jeannie, can you share that, um, spreadsheet that is in the packet? Just easier to have it in front of us.
I will look for it, yep.
So we've been going through, um, so we've had some projects close out that were ARPA funded projects and there was like balances remaining, you know, because we're always estimating when we put the, um, when we do the funding requests. And so we kind of pulled all those together. And then there's a few things like we talked about, the economic development position that with her departure, that funding is still kind of sitting there. Um, and so this kind of summarizes the project balances that we want to return back to the ARPA funds. So there's about seventy, close to seventy seven thousand dollars. And, you know, these are, you know, leftovers like the surf club playground, the, um, the lighting project. And then we see the EDC position. So, um, so we'd like to get those back into the pool. Um, and then in addition, if you go up to the top, you can see we still have a hundred and eighty-three that hasn't been allocated. Um, so that's like funds that there, there's no project it's, they're associated with right now. Um, so if you add the project balances back in the two together, means we have available two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of, of ARPA funds. I don't know if, can we make that a little bigger, Jeannie? Maybe it's just me, but. I don't know if I can do it on here, but, uh, anyway, so, um, so that's kind of where we are in terms of what's available. We have, um, uh, one project that's been kind of out there that we've been waiting on information that was involving, uh, portable lighting, I think for Madison youth soccer and Madison youth football. They were going to be also matching funds. Um, and we had a big talk about this. It was probably a year ago. And I think we're still just waiting for information on that. So that is kind of pending right now. I'm hoping next month we can come back and define, do, are we doing this or not? So there's kind of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that's earmarked for that project. And then the, the emergency inventory software, um, that nine thousand dollars, that was an item that had been approved. Um, and, um, then Sam just had difficulty finding what he needed to find. And so we kind of clawed the money back. And then he came forward in the budget with that. And that's when we went through our budgeting discussions, we said, okay, this was originally an ARPA project. Now he knows what the project is. So let's move it out of the budget and put it back into ARPA. So that's the nine thousand dollars. In talking to Stacy, we're in the, a, a critical year for ARPA because we have to have everything committed through like a purchase order or a contract by the end of twenty twenty four. And then it has to be spent by the end of twenty twenty six, I think, or is it twenty twenty seven? I don't know. Stacy on here?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, Stacy, um, I'm trying to remember, is it twenty? So we have to have a purchase order or contract by the end of this year fiscal, uh, calendar year. Um, and then we have to spend it. Is it twenty twenty six? I'm forgetting now my dates.
She's still over as an attendee, but Peggy, we're waiting for her.
Yeah.
The bottom line says that we have one point one million dollars to allocate.
Right. Well, that, that's what I wanted to say. So there's some projects out there where the money hasn't been spent yet. Um, and so we might have balances remaining out of those accounts. So for example, um, and, and there's no purchase order associated. So we're trying to basically go through and say by June first, we have to have this nailed down. So we know where we are in the balances.
Funds, but they just haven't started to spend it or put a purchase order in yet?
Right. And there's in there, Stacy is, can you get Stacy out?
I am here.
Yeah, uh, yeah, can, so, um, I, I, I know that, because we, we talked through how to present this, but it is a little confusion showing the one point one million. So that's basically what's in that number again?
So those are projects that we had already, um, committed over and above the hundred and eighty-three balance. So for example, the Nelson lights, it's not encumbered yet. We already approved the project. So there's a two hundred thousand dollar balance there. The thought was to show you all what that number is, talk to all of the department heads and really commit, encumber, make sure everything is committed by June first. So we have time, if there is a balance that we could return it and reallocate it. But the majority of those funds are accounted for. Another example, the geothermal. Um, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's not encumbered yet. Chances are it's going to be spent, but we just kind of wanted to show you what is there. So there's no surprises later if we do come back with a larger number of unexpended balances that we can reallocate.
Yeah. So like the geothermal, for example, um, if they end up, you know, there's a hundred and fifty that hasn't been encumbered. If he ends up only needing fifty of that, we might have another a hundred thousand coming back. So we just wanted to show that there's a variability still of some of this funding. But we really want to nail this down by June. So we have time to then go forward and pick another project and get it going and get purchase orders done and contracts by the end of the year. So, um, we're really pushing for that.
Are you getting signals that any of the projects Peggy might not end up leveraging or going forward, you know, leveraging the funds?
I think, I, I, I don't remember what's in there. There might be one smaller one, right? But.
There's, there's a bunch of small funds, Scott, that make up the balance as well. Um, there's downtown. Um, there's some money there. We're looking to see, you know, how much they're actually going to need to finish. There's a lot of the bathrooms. If you recall, we had money for Eastworth, Westworth, Rockland. So there's small balances, but we wanted to give the project a little bit more time before we take the money back. So I do think there will be, um, additional funds returned. I do not think it'll be close to a million dollars. Um, but we just kind of wanted to show you a snapshot of where we were as of today.
Yeah, because it could end up being five hundred or something, you know, uh, by the end of June that we're, we're, we're realizing isn't going to be. For example, downtown center project, we only have the two pole, we're waiting for that transformer. And we were able to get pretty much everything done. It's up two poles. So I think there's a big balance sitting in that account that was ARPA funded to get that project done. But until it's done, you know, we don't want to take the, take the funding back yet. Um, so, so we're just trying to work through it, but we feel like by June, we really have to have a hard stop on some of the stuff. And, and so we have a path forward to make sure that we, you know, we spend every penny. We don't want to be losing any money because we didn't, you know, get it committed. Um, but we do know that if we vote on this right now, uh, the seventy-six point eight million, we will have two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, and then nine is what we're recommending for, um, Sam, that was, you know, like a previous ARPA project and we're just putting it back into ARPA. So that would come out of the two sixty. And then we also know we have the hundred and thirty on the lighting, which to be honest, I, I want to understand, I think we'll have Austin, you know, come back and explain where that project is. I think we just have to make a decision soon on that. So if we did move forward on those projects, we still have a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars left in ARPA. And I know, uh, part of our recommended budget was to fund the downtown lighting again, um, through ARPA. So we have funds, uh, available to cover that. Um, so that would, that would, that was twenty-six thousand dollars. So that would still leave us almost a hundred thousand dollars um, of, of funding that we need to, you know, spend. So hopefully.
Some sort of small working group amongst the board of selectmen to make sure this gets shepherded through. I'm, I'm kind of hearing that if we just stick to our normal selectmen schedule, we might run out of meetings before we have to make decisions.
Um, I think it would be worth doing that probably as we get closer to June. The idea was by June, we want, you know, so maybe we involve the board like in May to kind of get a, you know, here's where we are. And it's not that we're, it's just, you know, these projects, you, you make an estimate, right? You go out and do the project and then you end up having money left over. Most of it's that. There's that one youth family. That's the one big project that's kind of been sitting there. And, um, we just have to get that resolved in the next month. So I would say by May, that's a good thing we should do, I think, to see where we are. We just want to have a plan by June for the rest of the money to make sure we don't lose it. Because it takes time, as you know, to go out, get bids or, you know, to vote on stuff and, and get the boards to, to buy into the project. So.
And Peggy, to your question before, we do need to commit by December of twenty-four and spend all of the funds by December of twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay. Um, and I'm, and I, and I don't think there's any, I think we've moved back into the pool. Most of the projects, we were concerned about that, you know, timeline. Um, I know we'll find use for all of it. So I do, I will say, actually I have, um, there was a couple of things I'm going to bring to the board probably next month that I did want to use some of that remaining balances for. One is the, um, we completed the welcome signs, right? And that was ARPA funded, but we also wanted to do wayfinding signs, which is more the directional signs, like those big tall ones that you, like the one in the circle, which everybody knows looks, you know, terrible and, and old. Um, and so I having them put together a budget for the, uh, directional signs, um, and that might be another twenty-five thousand dollars or something. But I thought let's just, since we're doing this, let's get those done too, since we have the ARPA funds. So that's, I'm, I'm trying to think through those kinds of things. We're like, here's a good opportunity to just finish this stuff off. Um, so that will be coming forward, uh, uh, probably, uh, in the next month, um, the, that. Uh, but I think, um, you know, I think we're in good shape. We're just, you know, we just want to make sure things get done and completed and, and we got all the right, uh, approvals in place. It's a good problem to have, right? So, um, so with that, I'll move on to item number eleven, um, which is discuss and take action to approve the following appropriations related to ARPA funds. Return project balances totaling seventy-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars to the ARPA fund. And, uh, two, approve round eighteen ARPA funding requests from the emergency services department in an amount of nine thousand fifteen dollars to partially fund enhanced software for the fire metro's office and both volunteer fire departments pending board of finance approval. Okay. So any further discussion or questions? No? All right. With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Passes unanimously. Great. Um, okay, good. So to be continued. So we'll, we'll get this all cleaned up hopefully by June and know where, where everything's going. Um, item number twelve is, um, discuss a, a draft ordinance for the senior services commission. Um, so this is part of our process. This was in the packet, um, that the senior commission, you know, is part of our process with the new charter to update all of our, uh, board, boarding commission ordinances. And so Austin's been working with his commission and they put forward a proposal. And so I don't know if everybody got a chance to read it. Um, Austin, can I ask you, how, we didn't get a redline version. How different is this of the current? Um, ordinance or, or not ordinance, I guess, um, charge.
Yeah. So we, we, um, we just took the charge that we developed. I want to say it was twenty fifteen, maybe, um, and just cleaned it up a little bit, put it in the, the order of which we were asked to, um, you know, made it look like all the other ordinances that will be coming before you.
So the template that we kind of put together, yep.
Yeah, yep. And just did some corrections, you know, nothing, nothing really changed. It's just a cleaner version of what we previously had.
Um, so there are some things that I did want to talk about, um, that I, when I went through this. Um, and, uh, one thing, and this is just, I was thinking about it. One is on the membership. Um, uh, and then the appointment. So, um, on item A, four A, you talk about a minimum of seventy-five percent of the regular meetings. And I was thinking about this because I know some ordinances have that in there. And I'm like, is seventy-five percent the consistent number? I think that's something we need to check because I would like it to be the same, you know, uh, number through all our commissions if we're going to have a standard. Um, so that was one thing I wanted to mention. The second, um, I was a little concerned about the, uh, one third of the membership shall consist of senior citizens. Um, was that in the previous ordinance?
But there, there wasn't an ordinance, but, uh, it was something the commission felt that they wanted to add.
And, and the reason I, first of all, do we define senior citizen? Is there a state definition of senior citizen? Is it sixty-five or older? Or is it, because I know we used to be sixty and then we moved to sixty-five?
We define it as sixty-five.
Um, the concern I have is not that it just, if we're, you know, somebody's sixty-three and they're retired and they're, uh, you know, expert in geriatric, whatever, um, and they're going to be turning, you know, then they're sixty-three. You know, I just thought, um, you know, is that going to prohibit something? Is that going to create a problem? Are we going to be able to get enough people? Um, I know it's a nine-person commission, so that's still, you know, there's still lots of room for people who don't hit that qualification. But I, I kind of wanted to flag that. I was just a little concerned it might hurt, you know, in terms of getting membership. I don't know if any other board members feel, have views on that.
Well, that was my first, that was going to be my first comment was, one, there is no definition of senior. Um, and for purposes of the discussions, I consider myself a. Um, and for purposes of the discussions, I consider myself a senior for the beach pass pricing.
Dude, that was coming.
But um, I, I think, you know, it, it probably, I, I agree with Peggy, I'm. I, I think it's okay maybe to have a, a, a little bit of a um. A draft. Preference. For um. People of a certain age, but I would not limit your choices to that in the event that. Some reason you can't, can't sign up enough people. So I would, I would bake in flexibility.
Um, Austin, I, I, this question is probably going to sound stupid, but, but what was the committee's thinking about putting that provision in?
I think just to make sure that the senior population was. You know, represented on the senior commission. To, you know, give their input and have a say in how. You know, the senior services commission is run as a, a senior living in Madison.
Is there some sense that that is not happening under our current composition?
It's. A, a hundred percent seniors currently.
Oh, yeah, that's what I, I, I am saying, we've never, it's never been an issue. I just thought. You know, maybe we just put in there instead of shall, you know, we just said, we, we would say, you know, the committee, you know. We would endeavor to, you know. Have at least one third of the membership consists of senior citizens, you know, um, I, we, I can put some wording in there just so it's a goal, but it's not a, a hard stop. Only because. And then I'm also like, one third of the membership, what if you end up never filling the nine spots? So does that mean that if you only have six spots? It's one third of six, you know.
Quorums are derived from the seated members, not from vacancies.
So, so that's where if you get down for a while, you know, you don't want to create a problem either. So we can just mess with the language. I think the goal is there, like you said, most of the people that are interested are approaching being the seniors or are seniors that are, that, that. Sit on it, so um, we'll maybe just kind of water that down a little bit. And then the other uh, comment, I was just looking at this, I know you have in here the chair stuff about the four years. I'm just wondering if. We, we, just instead, we refer to the charter on that, right? The, 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 because otherwise if the charter were to change, you don't want to have to go back and change all the uh. Ordinances. So anything that's in the charter, we would just refer to the charter in terms of the rules. Because we don't want to have to re-ordinance everything again. If, say, we update the charter five years from now, you know, and then, and pull that out or change it and make it six years or something, then. You, you're not caught with the ordinance being kind of out of step.
Um, I'd like to bring up a discussion around section eleven, um, that speaks to the creation of ad hoc committees. Um, I don't know, Austin, was it the intent that the ad hoc committees would be formed from within? The commission members or that the commission would go out and solicit. Individuals from the community to serve on ad hoc committees. Okay, and so I think for us, the discussion is. As, as these things become boilerplate, do we want? Commissions creating ad hoc committees under their own authority? I, I mean, I, I'm.
Maybe, maybe we're just tripping over the word ad hoc though, and you know, because we sort of use that in other veins. I mean, I wonder if we just call it like working groups or something like it's. It's really the mechanism for these boards and commissions to get things done in subgroups. I, I, I think that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, but the language is pretty specific about assigning duties and responsibilities. I'm, I, 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 I think that ad hoc committees. You know, are, are traditionally the, the, the purview of the board of selectmen. If it was the intention in this language to create working groups to work out a, a, you know, particular topic and. And bring back findings to um, a commission, well, that's, that's different. I wouldn't describe it as an ad hoc. Committee.
Let's just tweak the language.
That's exactly the, the point, and both of you are right. I think, you know, changing the wording to working group. And that ad hoc would. Clear that up.
Because this is very. Uh, I mean, it's, it's very detailed, so kudos to the, to you and the commission, because you really went through and, and spent a lot of time. Looking at a lot of stuff, so it, it's great in that sense. But just looking at some of the, um, I mean, it's, it's to the level of precision where I just worry about. You know, is it too much detail in this? Like, it, it specifically says what quorum is in here and to. You know, we've known the senior commission, we've been down members, right? Um, and it is a large committee, so um, quorum is really going to be for seated members, so we, we would need to change that, whereas you have specifically. A. Number in here. So then if you had, if you only have six appointed members. What is quorum then, right? So you're going to have. Pardon?
You're saying because of vacant seats?
Yeah, so if you have vacancies, you know, you can have for a year where you only have six of the seats, right? So is quorum four or is it five? Because according to here, it says five. Um, so I'm just thinking through. You know, I don't know if we have to get into that level of detail about this, just because, you know, we do know we've had experiences where we've had vacancies for a while. On some of the commissions, so.
I, I think Peggy, your bigger point is well taken. Wherever possible, these um. Ordinances should point back to either a state statute or, or um, some existing. Policy that, that is townwide, rather than recreate these in every individual ordinance.
Yeah, and I'm trying to think like, so uh.
It's percentage of the seated. People as opposed to, you know.
Usually a quorum is a simple majority.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and it's, and that, that was, you know, we've had that cut, question come up like for planning and zoning, because there was a question about that and then. But then how, is there a minimum seat required? I, I don't, I mean, I'm over analyzing it, but uh. So I, I think some of this, and I can work with you, Austin, just kind of, um, I mean, like I said, this is a great job. It's very detailed. It's got like everything, all your bases covered. Um, but having lived through. Different scenarios with different boards and commissions, now I'm kind of like going, okay, maybe it's better we don't have it in the ordinance itself. And we kind of have some of this more just pointing to other things, um, to give some flexibility there. So we could do it, I can work with you on this a little bit more, just kind of watering some of it down. And changing some of the language.
So you don't get boxed in, it's just so you don't get boxed in too, I think, right? I mean, it's really more benefiting the commission more than anything else.
Yeah, no, I think it definitely is. Uh, but there, you know, there might be some history here of why some of this is specific to from experience. Is there, there's no alternates on this though, right? There shouldn't be any alternates, yeah. Yeah, okay. Any, any other questions for Austin? So we'll, 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 we'll come back with a, a slight revision of this for another meeting for approval. Okay?
Do you have any sense from the commission? I mean, they, they put obviously some hard work into this too. Are they going to be? Concerned at all about, you know, us simplifying maybe or, or, you know, we, we certainly aren't, aren't intending to water it down by any means.
No, not at all. We meet tonight and I'll bring um. These comments back to them tonight and um, you know, over the next month or so, we'll. Work those into the, the draft and we'll come back and I don't, there won't be any, it won't be a problem.
And this is really the first comprehensive. Commission ordinance that we've seen, so they have the luxury of, of now us. Thinking and applying some of our. Charter thinking to, to all of this. So i- ideally, we emerge from this with, with this as a template for.
I agree, Bruce.
The other commissions.
I like, I like that pointing to things too. I think, you know, then we're interconnecting a lot, which is smart.
Well, also it keeps everything in sync, because if we update the original. Um, policy, then all of the other ones that refer to it are updated by definition.
Agreed.
Okay, all right, good. So we've got some good feedback and we'll, we'll um, move this forward uh, at a future meeting. So, all right, thank you. For that. So item number uh, thirteen. Is discuss and take action to call public hearing at town campus room C, Hammond Asset Room and Zoom on Thursday, April eighteenth at seven PM for the. For, purpose of discussing the town and Board of Education budget, uh, uh, budgets as recommended.
I moved.
Second.
Okay, so this is the Board of Finance. There was a conflict, I think, that um, uh, of having it. I think it was originally scheduled for the sixteenth, um, and so we had to move it to the eighteenth. For some reason, I thought we voted on this, but um. Yeah. Well, we changed it to make sure it was Hammond Asset and then Zoom. I think that's what happened. And then after that, we, because originally it was only going to be in person. So we wanted to make it hybrid and then now I guess the date needs to be changed. So. And this is the accurate one, right? It's Zoom, I guess if we called it twice, we called it twice, so. All right, any further discussion on this? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, okay, great. Um, and item number fourteen. So any citizens' comments?
There are no citizens on.
None today.
All right, going once, going twice. Why do I see a Q and A question?
Oh, that was uh, Stacy.
Okay, thanks. Um, okay, great. Well, hearing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Want to come up with our, uh, what, what we want to wear the next time? Because we matched so well.